I think we're gonna go ahead and start our meeting tonight for March 19th. First on our agenda is approval of the February 19th and 26, 2018 minutes. Do you have a copy of it in front of you?
I have a couple of changes, but I will hand them in Travis. They're just spelling and then one or two little minor changes in what I said.
I had to take a vacation, so that was first draft.
Okay, I'll get it to you so you can...
I'll second them.
Are you up for second? We want to accept them as is?
No, as change.
As change. As modified. All on paper?
Aye.
And the FO? Before we get into our old business, we have time at this point for a public comment, if anyone had any. Nothing in particular yet? The old business that we started last time was Chapter 152 Wireless Communications Facilities Ordinance Revision for the Small Cell Sites. And Justin, you want to update us on the new paperwork?
So, I sent out the original packet that we had last month with John's draft adding the small cell definition and text changes from the general statute. Since then, I just sent out, John sent to me 20 minutes ago, an updated one and it's got some minor changes in blue. You'll see in it compared to the other one, there's some definitions. I haven't even looked through to see which definition's what, I'm assuming he's got it. So we'll have to go through and look where the changes are. I think it's some minor stuff, some stuff on like utility and some stuff on underground power. If I gave you both a copy so we can kind of compare and see if there's changes. Because I think you might be some later on, I was flipping through it, it looked like might not be the blue one. But John did say in his email that this new version he thought was sound in the way that we were going with the general statute and even with it modeling the changes that Kerry had done, which they've approved and they're kind of Kerry.
Most of the language that he's inserted is really straight from Raleigh for the most part, as far as what we can and can't do?
Yeah, I mean, there's some minor stuff, he took where he had a little Alderman out, he's changed that. Base station, those same, co-location. Talks about concealing, those are the same ones we went through last month. Let's see what it did from now on.
Okay. And most of the meat and potatoes of the changes will be under the subchapter 2, Small Wireless Facilities on, and beginning before that is mostly definitions. That's what it looks like.
Quick question, has anything been changed on this?
That's what we just talked about.
Is there an answer to that yet?
Well, he's reviewing to see if there's any immediate...
Oh, so we just talked about the person who came in late, if he asked any questions, he would have to fork over a fine. Okay, that's fine, I'd be more than happy to. It'll probably be less than the money I just made. I know this is free.
Did we want to go ahead and just review it page by page for the changes of the definitions and see how we feel about these?
I haven't seen any difference yet.
I haven't seen anything, except for just...
I'll go to page 22 and I'll pick...
I was on page 26, I just quit. So we could go through...
I don't know, it's sitting in the same order here. Both are set more than utilities.
I think he just cleaned up the margins where some of his Adobe was showing up. One I could see. Well, up through page 26.
Okay, historic preservation has changed on page 26. Maybe it's just... Yeah. He added "if such certificate is required by the UDO." So he's added just a little bit of language there on G150...
Oh, yeah.
54.31G.
I think that's probably going with the discussion last month where we were talking about not wanting his equipment on our lots on Main Street. Our section of lots on Main Street, that's one of the sections in the general statute where you could allow...
So we have to go, it sounds like we have to go back and change the UDO to make sure there's a certificate of appropriateness in that. Because he's saying now, before he just said they would be required to obtain the certificate, and now he's added "if such certificate is required by the UDO or other applicable regulations." So we need to make sure if that's what we want to do...
To follow the guideline.
Right, that we've got it in the UDO.
And on the next, page 27, he refers to the historic preservation again.
Mm-hmm. And same thing, he's just added that wording at the end.
You probably didn't have to develop a historic preservation district to do that as well, so I guess that's where he's going with that, with what we were discussing. That's probably what he's talking about, we would need to adopt further regulation to make this effective.
Okay, so that's what it is?
Yeah.
Instead of historic districts, we could have historic sites, because they seem to be scattered sometimes.
Yeah.
Well, you probably have multiple districts, I would say.
How do we do that? Is that part of...
That's a whole new thing.
Yeah.
When you get into the historic districts, that's... I know there are a lot of towns across the state that have those, you know, that ideas around downtowns and...
And how does that affect development and historical sections and whether they can do, you know, make changes to existing use or prior use or how that, you know?
Yeah.
I don't know. We'd have to research that.
Yeah. I'd have to do some more research on it to see. I mean, when you get into those, I know some cities across the state, they have boards that then the certificate of appropriateness is approved by a planning board or a...
A review board.
Or a review board and that gets into an area where somebody's wanting to make changes in the historic district that, you know, they want to change the entire facade of a historic building.
That's usually a committee and not necessarily the planning board.
Right, right. It's a committee, what do they call those?
Architectural review?
Yeah, that's it, design committee.
We're not there. It don't happen.
So that's where that would be.
Well, does that take teeth out of this then? Out of the wireless communication draft? I wonder?
The way you got drafted is fine that you couldn't take the lots on Main Street without having that in there, having adopted historic preservation district.
So that must be the way the law works. I mean, he wouldn't just arbitrarily put that in for more work for us to do. That must be what...
I think it was one of the ways we could buffer us from Raleigh.
Right, in the general statute, it was allowed if it was in a historical preservation district, and that's why he put that in. That's probably the only area that you can do that would be by adopting one of the districts. Now, whether the town would want to do that and go that route.
I think the town has talked about that. I know the town has talked about that before, not the town maybe, but in the old Streets of Franklin group that used to exist, they talked about creating a historic district because it was a protection for the area. That was a long time ago.
I don't see, after you get through those, after page 28, I don't see any more changes. It's supposed to be the same. So he just added that historic section.
Okay. So do you all just want to go over the definitions that have changed according to our Chapter 154, but everything in blue is potential changes that more than likely came directly from Raleigh as far as the definitions? We can review them?
Sure.
And the first one, antenna, and removing the name Alderman. It's crossed off.
If you go on page two, you can see that our original definition of antenna.
Technically, it's an easier definition to understand than our old one. We find it pretty acceptable and we can move on to the next definition?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought you did. I thought you told me, the next one?
No, I was right ahead of you.
Under application. Basically, he had a sentence for co-locating the wireless facility seems to be the main difference. And that was the whole point of the change.
Right, that's the new terminology today.
So we're okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yes. Under base station, it was changed to structure and then an additional definition behind that. Did you have a chance to review it? And so, no difficulty with that definition? We can move on to co-location?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Co-location looks almost like how it was spelled more than anything.
Supplication of it.
Well, what governs the, says it does not include the installation of new utility poles, town utility poles or wireless support structures. Is that covered somewhere else?
Yeah, probably, I think later on, you'll, page five, there's utility pole.
Okay.
Definitely utility pole. Or the town utility pole, so that's your... That's intended for that.
So co-locations is a term used where we already have a structure or a pole to use and not a new structure.
But we've got to, but we have to regulate new structures too.
Next one, page, under page five.
Page five.
Five, utility pole. Just defines the pole.
Yeah, that doesn't tell you how you're going to, how are you going to regulate new utility poles, town utility poles or wireless support structures?
Probably gotta get more into the actual small cell definition. Code of 153, 154.31, co-location of small wireless facilities.
Okay, so this is probably, all this new language is probably...
The definitions.
The regulation on those particular, new things.
Yeah, it's all there.
The first five pages are just the definitions of that type, you know, whatever it is.
154.32 covers the new poles.
The definition of, it's not in reference.
Okay.
Arden. Let's see, where was it? So as far as the co-location, we are in agreement with using that definition?
Sure.
Yes.
And concealed wireless facility is a new terminology we're adding to our definitions. And anybody had any chance to review and have difficulty with it at all? I don't think we have a lot of latitude with what the state sent us on that one. And the next one, concealed element, another new definition for us from the state.
Welcome to the new world.
I know.
That's the whole, you know, we're talking about having equipment match the poles and it's all, it's just not, it's a wooden pole, you try to make it so much neutral color and it's not like a big red box on the side of it.
Try to make it blend in, tear and surround it.
That's the intent, like, that definition, you know, so it's referred, whether on in the sections, you know, actual need.
Okay. Another definition, apparently new for us, is the micro wireless facility. And that was the dimensions that were given before also. And the monopole definition.
I was trying to find the specs on that. Is there a certain height that just a monopole could be? I think there was. And I'm sure somewhere in here, but I just questioned...
Whether we ought to put a height in there?
You know, if it's standalone, that's what that is. Is there a, is there gonna be a place in there that says "no greater than," the height's "no larger than the diameter of..."
One reference that we had earlier was the poles may be 50 feet in height or greater depending on the height of existing poles located nearby. That was Kerry.
I'm just wondering...
50 feet. Pretty tall in our neck of the woods.
How tall are our poles around here now?
The average of them is 45 to 50 feet.
Is it? For the, that's for regular utility poles, that's not like on Main Street.
On Main Street, they're only gonna be about 25 feet.
Yeah.
So I just wondered where this needs to be in there.
We did a float one year that was 16 feet tall and it wouldn't be legal today.
Or some verbiage where it's just conforming to whatever the area they're in.
Yeah.
Wouldn't want to see a 50-foot pole hiding in the middle of the... There's a place for everything, but not on Main Street for 50-foot poles.
So, we could put down, depending on the height of existing poles located nearby?
Well, maybe it's in here, guys, maybe it's somewhere. Well, no, 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 it's not my question, I'm questioning right here where this is, no greater than, no taller than.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, you put up a monopole that was as tall as some of these, you know, 200 or 300 feet tall, like out in the...
It also says utility pole is not a monopole.
Right, it's not. So that's why I wondered.
That clears it.
No, that talks about a monopole, but evidently they can be as tall as they need to be, like the ones out in the country where they've got them really sticking up over the trees.
Yeah, the definition for utility pole, two pages down, doesn't have a height differential on it either.
I beg your pardon, it says not to exceed 50 feet above ground.
Town utility pole.
Town utility pole.
Oh, there it is.
So it means they can't put a 50-foot one down Main Street. Well, that's different. There's a difference in a monopole and utility pole.
Yeah.
Yes. But if they were putting... I mean, somewhere we'd need to put an asterisk by that to come back to it.
Yeah, I've got a mark on here.
The monopole definition?
Yeah, height, I put height, question mark out by it.
Right. Unless they got it somewhere in here down the road.
All right, so we'll kick that one back. The next change would be qualifying town utility pole. And that's the one that you already mentioned, 50 foot or 10 foot above, not to be 10 foot above the existing poles.
That's the standard there.
We comfortable with that? Next definition, qualifying small wireless facility.
That's that little box that they won't put on them.
Can't be hanging over the sidewalk where people walk into the side of it or over the street where cars might bump into it.
Didn't we have some, didn't we discuss that verbiage when Jordan was here about that? Yeah, the people we were talking about. Whatever it was, it put my mind, it just couldn't block the walkway.
Do we want to add that as an asterisk?
No, I think it...
It's covered?
Yeah.
All right. The next definition, qualifying utility pole. A new utility pole or modification of a utility pole should not exceed 50 feet. That's what you were talking about also.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And that's standard.
Yes.
Yeah.
Wouldn't that cover monopoles too?
No.
Utility poles.
It said it has nothing to do with a utility pole.
Because as you're looking at a data transmission signal, that's gonna be free of interference. As opposed to being a virtual utility lines and gosh knows what else.
The definition of shroud is new for... And the shroud is covering the next definition, small wireless facility, which is the same definition that was in the Kerry example.
I see the typographical error on that one too.
Where'd you find it?
It's cubic feet. And that's what it say feet.
Oh, yeah, feet, I see.
It's volume of no more than 28 cubic feet.
Good eyes, Suzie.
That's a big one.
It's under A. They left out the T in feet. Six cubic feet and they say feet.
Oh, are you on the new one over there?
Yeah.
I'm on the old one.
As far as the 28 cubic feet on B and 6 cubic feet on A, do we all right with that to move forward?
I'm gonna make an assumption that mirrors what the state's made.
Yeah, probably.
I'm gonna make that assumption.
It's almost verbatim.
Yeah.
Looks like they're using telecommunications site and wireless telecommunications facility somewhat interchangeably. And the town of Franklin, we okay with that?
You changing that, is it too late?
The town council, still getting used to that. Do we have a map that does show the right-of-ways that the town has all-inclusive or do we just have to...
I have a map that shows part of the town streets and then so you have those right-of-ways and I don't have like just the right-of-ways map themselves. But I have separated state roads, progress, town streets.
Okay. And there's the definition for utility pole again. Owned by the town. Were we satisfied with the height restrictions on the other definitions to move forward?
Yeah.
Okay. Utility pole and I believe we covered that before on the height.
Yes.
UDO, that's pretty self-explanatory. The next page, just a definition of co-location. Just a typo almost. Page seven, there's no change. Page eight, there's no change. Nine, there's no change.
Yeah, some protections here.
Yep, yeah. You guys are fast.
Well, we got better friends than you.
I guess so, well, similar. Board of Alderman was changed.
On what?
On 13 and 14.
13 and 14.
Two council members instead.
Yeah.
Same thing on 16. Co-locations was changed on 19.
This is, Justin, this rate's on these pretty well standard titles of state. When it said about 2,000, I mean, 2 million, I forget 1,000 for...
Lot bill.
For lot billies, that's standard.
Yeah, that's pretty standard. That's the same what we've had.
This is all new.
We adopted.
Yes, this is the meat and potatoes. Okay, now after all the definitions, we're up to 154.27 on page 23, which initially is just the purpose or goals of what we're trying to do. Do you have time to review those and see if there's any changes you'd like to consider?
I graced right through this because I made an assumption that this is, you know, boil apart. Hey, it looks good. I mean, I can jump it out. Should put in its purpose.
I didn't have any locations from reading everything out of it.
But I'll wait, I got something here from five, I think it answers the monopole question.
Are we okay with A through H on that page?
Yes.
And then 154.28, the citing of the small wireless facilities. Just says that the town prefers a small wireless facilities to be located outside of the public right-of-way, but it's just a preference at this point?
It's just guidance.
Yeah, it says these preferences are intended as guidance.
Yeah.
It says on the next page.
Yep, there it is.
For development of an application. Who develops that? Do we do that?
No, that'd be the applicant.
Okay.
If he gets to guide. Get to guide back there.
Yeah.
154.29, applicability. It says qualifying town utility poles. I just didn't know how they're identified. I know the right-of-way, we're going to use that right-of-way map of town roads versus state roads. But how would a utility pole be identified by someone coming in to find it? Do we have that many that we actually own as a town?
Um, no, I don't actually think the town really owns any, except maybe on town property. Like, we might own a pole like...
A drop pole.
Yeah, one behind the firehouse has got us to fly on it. It's on the town property. We probably own that pole. But like, the ones, the town does it, we don't do our own power, like, kind of Highlands does, but they own their own poles. But I think you put the text in for those situations, like where we might own a pole at the police department, or we own a pole here, or, you know. Or even if the future of the town ever decided they wanted to, you know, own other poles, so that's why it's in there.
And later in that same paragraph, "Without limitation, the provisions of this subchapter do not permit placement of small wireless facilities on privately owned utility poles or wireless structures or on private property without consent of the property owner, including all property owners in interest of the property." Yep, will that be a separate part of the application for the...
Yeah, that part of the app's had a new line to say, you have consent of Duke Energy to put this on this pole, but they can't just go out there. Duke has their own requirements where, you know, they can allow something on that pole. Or vice versa, if it was in the middle of a shopping center, with some lights, you know, they...
Or if you wanted to locate a co-location, something on my property, you would have a right to agree to sign a separate contract with me.
We did something like that on our special use permits.
Oh, that's right.
We added a line to special use permits to require, sometimes somebody's making applications, not the property owner. And we had a made a line to say that they have the consent of the property owner to make this application, they're wanting to, you know, so it's kind of following that same.
Alright, and then we're dropping down to one fifty-four point three-zero, the exemptions. Eligible facilities request, do they have to have some sort of standard, like they're insured or can prove that they exist? It's not just a non-entity buying up right-of-ways? Kind of just, who's eligible?
Well, eligible, well, alright, eligible facilities request, okay, I know where you're going with that. If you go back in, you know, back through the text, eligible facilities request is a section under, in the ordinance already for like an existing cell tower. And so eligible facility request is referring to the section, say, Verizon's, Verizon that the tower on Cunningham Road, which is one they're always, you know, making changes to. They're wanting to remove some, you know, antiquated antenna equipment and put up the new modern equipment. And it's going to be in the same spot, it's in the same location. It's not going to add height, it's going to add weight, and that's an eligible facilities request. And it's not as, not as, don't have to get as detailed as like you're building a new tower.
It's almost like an upgrade.
Yeah, it's an upgrade without raising any height, they're adding a bunch of weight, adding new facilities to it, so. Not like if a new carrier went on, then, you know, it could be, but it's, that kind of, let's say, those facilities would be exempt if, say, somebody put one on a telephone pole on Deco Street and five years from now, 5G comes out, when it finally, and they want to change those poles, those in his. So that would, it's going to be the same, might be even smaller. They don't have to go through the whole process.
Okay, that makes sense. Any other questions about the exemptions? And the next section would be one fifty-four point three-one, co-location of small wireless facilities.
Um, what I was thinking on this, I had my note with on the B, height. It says each new small cell facility shall not exceed more than ten feet above the utility pole, town utility pole, or wireless support structure on which it is located. I'm thinking there you could probably add your monopole.
Yeah, I think that...
You could add that to that, and that gets your, can't be more than ten feet above a monopole.
Yeah, get that verbiage in there.
So just add the monopole, utility, two utility pole, town utility pole, or wireless, just insert that.
Yeah, then you're covering all the poles, all the tops.
Okay. Everyone comfortable with that?
Sure.
Absolutely.
Any other comments on A, B, C section on page twenty-five?
C's good, C's good, so it doesn't interfere with, you know, police radios, your fire radios, your mess, that's a good, something like that in there. That can be an issue at times.
Yeah, for your farms.
With, I know, like, the county's running, running issues, some parasites and...
It just kind of covers this on the size of that box and right-of-ways and how big they can be on paragraph three of section C. Kind of helps with that, doesn't it? And this should be a matter of plan, right, right there. Must be submitted for installation. Yeah, I mean, that kind of says, look, box is going to be twenty-eight square cubic feet, and it's going to go right here, and it's like, no, it ain't.
Yeah, it probably gets into our section of, we don't want a refrigerator box sitting in the middle of the sidewalk.
That's exactly what that says.
Now that's a refrigerator sidewalk.
Right. Looks like it covers that.
Yeah. Now, under the same section, D, um, no, not D, excuse me, C, who's the number five? An abandoned wireless facility shall be removed within one hundred and eighty days of abandonment. Is it on the application that the person who puts it in is responsible for taking it out?
You would think.
Um, I think that, I think that is a section in the regular ordinance, there's an abandonment section in here, in the original ordinance.
Yeah, we'd like the cost not to be on the town.
You know, out here, the removal of wireless, there's one fifty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, there's the default communication, and then the removal of wireless facilities.
Where is that at?
So, page twenty-one and twenty-two.
Okay.
Look, we're going to have time to inspect poles, so. But it's in here.
It does cover it.
It does cover it.
Yeah, it says the holder should dismantle it.
Remember our original ordinance, it was written by, it was what they do. So they...
Well, back to page twenty-six, we were just discussing the last of C, and then we have D, E, F, and G. And we're going to add on G, modifications to the UDO for sites or districts, is something we're considering.
Well, it says over here, we'd need to adopt further regulation.
Oh, there it is.
To make this effective, so that's something we just need to highlight, and then realize we need to do something about that in the future.
Like, it could be in there, and if, depending on the size of adopted, then it just goes in fact. If it's a town size, that's something they don't want to go.
You don't have to come back and modify this.
It's here, but it doesn't mean.
Right.
It is, yeah.
It's just text, it doesn't...
At the bottom of page twenty-six, we have one fifty-four point three-two section. Is there any questions or concerns with that area for use of utility poles and town utility poles?
Height, we go with height.
Is there anything mentioning like an application in B, we're going to charge?
I believe that we can, we're limited to what we can charge on the fee, and if they have multiple poles, we're limited even more. I think we're capped at two thousand dollars.
Right.
The schedule's in here, I believe. What?
I think fifty dollars was the max, you could charge for one site, but then after...
So many sites.
So many sites, it was like, you could charge for...
How does this affect our E nine-one-one address?
I think it would affect the address.
The locations?
I mean, no, I mean, they would probably all have an address.
I mean, that's what I was going to say, you'd think that they would all have to have them.
It would be more common, if, uh, nine-one-one has, they have some internal addresses. You know, like, if you go in the county, you'll see, you know, houses, structures, they all have an order, and then they have an address, but then, like, all the fire hydrants are addressed, there's an address for all the fire hydrants. And so they could see, if there's a facility, they would give an address for when they...
Just go and piggyback off of that?
Yeah, they would just add an address to it. And it would get one, I'm assuming, so if they...
Have a problem, they know where to test.
Or if somebody called in, and their cell signal bounced off that, that pole, and it's got its address, that you could know it's in that area.
That's where I was wondering.
That's security.
Yeah, so, like, sometimes we get, we get text messages from the fire department, it shows, it might show a cellphone, but it doesn't show, it shows through the cellphone, but it came from nine Cunningham Road, which is a cell tower over behind the... So obviously, we're like, we're not going, we're not going there, we're going somewhere else.
Right.
That's where it bounced off of.
Yeah.
Okay, I have a question on D, number one. Are we that far?
Yes.
Okay, it says with a small wireless, in a clear zone, what's, I don't know what a clear zone is. And the clear zone is defined in the Town of Franklin Standard Specifications and Details Manual.
I did know what that was. I read that once, and I can't remember what it was now.
And then the other question is, unless such replacement pole is breakaway rated, what was that, I don't know.
If a car hits it, it breaks away.
Oh, okay, alright, okay, got it. But now the clear zone, I don't know.
I did have that before. But it's not in our definition.
And it wasn't in the definition.
I don't know, I don't know what the clear zone is.
That's a good question to ask.
Here it is. Oh, sorry. Uh, the clear zone is defined by the Federal Highway Administration as an unobstructive, relatively flat area beyond the edges of the traveled way that allows a driver to stop safely or gain control of a vehicle that leaves the traveled way. So it's kind of a pull-over area for the car.
Pull-over, clear zone. You know, a clear zone.
Should we add that to our definition?
Well, is it in the Town of Franklin Standard Specifications and Details Manual?
I can't think of anywhere we have a clear zone in town.
Do we even have a standard specifications and details manual? That's my question.
Sidewalks.
It's a good question, though.
It is.
Yeah, that's a good catch, because it could just be language that was inserted from the regular regulations, and it may not apply to us, or we may need to do an extra thing to make it apply.
Well, it says, as defined by the Town of Franklin's standard specifications, like he said, so.
And detail manual.
Maybe we should have that clear zone added to the definitions?
Um, yeah, if you want to...
Does that sound like you'd add it?
...the definition from, where you have it?
Uh, carry.
Find that definition, Tom, where'd you see that?
The carry ordinance.
It's in the carry ordinance. So, you know, it could be that we just changed language in there to say Town of Franklin instead of carry, and it might not apply to the Town of Franklin as it is right now.
What page is that on in the carry one?
Ooh, it's not numbered, but it's the one with the chart of the cop.
Okay.
Sorry. It is about a quarter of the way back from the front. So I see you. Yes, I believe.
No, that's not it, no.
It was right. Yeah. It's the one that's highlighted in pink.
That's your highlight.
Right-of-way, quick slash clear zone?
Yes.
Yeah, clear zone, yeah.
Oh, you got a copy of it.
Okay, so that's, the clear zone is defined by the Federal Highway Administration, so...
So, alright.
The dimensions of clear zone are generally based on the speed limit of the road.
I think...
For this much, for that much.
It doesn't say that.
I think that section of that clear zone with the Town of Franklin Standard Specification and Details Manual, we should add some, the same note as John had, that would need further adoption, so that's something...
Yeah.
Yeah, it's going to be mentioned.
We don't, no.
Yeah, that was a good catch, Suzie.
Would need to adopt further regulations, I guess, that...
John said, it's a document you pull together, put all your technical requirements into one manual.
Okay, so we don't have that yet.
No.
So this is the first one.
So the Standard Specifications and Detail Manual would need to be developed.
Has not yet been read.
Further regulations.
To be, talk to the...
To the ten on three eighteen by six.
And under Public Safety D two, any questions about that? Or E or F? And then they touch base on the historic preservation, again on G. But I think that was the same change that he had on his original.
It was.
Under I, H and I, applicable codes and standard conditions. Any questions or concerns?
So who, who sort of maintains these things? Like, let's say in a couple of years or so, paint starts peeling off, and it starts looking all bad, I'm under number two. Or, you know, or they, it gets graffiti written on it, you know, or something. So who makes the...
The divider?
Who reg, like, I'm driving through town, and I notice that the paint's peeling off, do I report that to the town, or do I report it to the applicant?
You would report it to the town, and then we would send a letter of notice of violation to the applicant or the owner of the facility.
And that's their responsibility, yeah.
The visual standards established at the time of approval of the permit.
Right.
Yeah, the visual standards, and does that mean it's grandfathered in if we changed the visual standards?
Pretty much everything's grandfathered in. We only make changes from that point forward. forward. Unless we take a video of every pole before they.
No, I mean, if we change, if we decide that instead of just complying with a shroud or some kind of, if we'd want it to do something else, then that one doesn't have to change, because it's been, it's been.
Approved.
Approved at the time, the visual standards as of, at the time it was approved are less than what we, you know, later on decided.
It doesn't make the accepted standards.
I guess unless it was taken down and replaced, they wouldn't have to bring it up to code then.
I would think that. The right progression.
You wanna kick that to John?
Now, let's ask him if we can say, according to the visual standards of the, of the ordinance, rather than at the time of approval.
Not at the time of approval.
So whatever the visual standards are at, of the ordinance, that we'd need to approve, to come into compliance with. Not that we're gonna change it every week, but, you know, it could, it could in some later.
I, I, I.
We could decide that, you know, whatever they're doing is not really acceptable, and we need to change that standard, not like what they look.
So you just wanna say change it from, 'cause orders are not town approved?
Right, right, because established in the ordinance.
Could change.
Mm-hmm.
Establish that changes the way the order is written, and you wanna just change the.
Yeah.
There's just little latitude.
Yeah.
I would say.
It's a lot.
How would you word that?
You would say that it's maintained to the visual standards established in the ordinance, instead of.
Lobby this thing.
At the time of approval. See, at the time of approval signifies that they don't have to change what the shroud or anything about it.
Yeah, I would think that, I would think that would be fine.
We can ask John, but that, that sounds a little more flexible.
High two.
Yes, high two.
All right.
The fifth sentence down.
So I four indicates they'll have a placard of who owns the equipment, so if we need to contact them, we could do it that way?
Yeah, a little play or something.
Yeah.
Be part of it.
Yeah, six is good, too. We've had a chance to review I, number one through seven, any other concerns or recommendations at this time? And we're getting.
Just accept what they passed on.
Yeah.
That's it.
That's about it. So, John's okay with the recommendations, he could make the changes and adopt them to the final draft of this?
Yeah, do you want to, do you want to begin in the coming, next week or something?
Next week.
Or do you wanna kind of continue again?
Next week is Holy Week.
Oh, it is, yeah.
Well, how come we just can't get these modified and sent to us, and let's just send you back by email?
Well, if he, I mean, do we need to do it right away?
They, they did the hearing again, like, time four, and then we postponed it, and they did it again for April.
Okay, so that's one, okay. All right, I make a recommendation, I make a motion, that we change the wording on page twenty-eight. Under I two, to visual standards established in the ordinance, and that on page twenty-seven, we define clear zone, and note that we need to adopt the Standard Specifications and Detail Manual. And I think those were the two, and we add monopole on page twenty-five.
Right.
Uh, to one fifty-four point thirty-one B.
And then there was a typo for fees.
Yeah, and that, and we correct the typo on, let's see, what was back in the front part, I don't know. On page four.
That's all four?
Mm-hmm, that was where the typo was.
I asked, before you get to Willie, her, um, before she's done with her motion, John, we talked about the fees, um, in the fees sections, he said, he would recommend addition of a section stating that fees will be permitted by law, and then we would fill the fees in by law.
Right.
Okay.
That's a good question.
Yeah, so that would come under.
We could give that to, um, if you just write after, after, you got thirty-two, this would be one fifty-four point three-three, which is coming, that'd be right before the page twenty-nine, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
Just add another one.
Now, are we going to approve this subject to those, these few changes, is that how we're gonna do this?
That's what I'm making that motion.
That's a great idea.
That we approve it subject to these changes, including the fees, then, add that one to.
Right.
That we include one fifty-four point three-three, and include the fee structure information.
Obviously, they'll give reasonable explanation at the town meeting, if there's, John will give a reasonable explanation, something we can't.
I feel the fee section will follow the visual status.
Sure.
I'll second Jen's motion.
We have a second on the floor, all of you.
Hi.
And you oppose? And then that will pass on forward to John for his amendments, and then forward it on to the town council. Solve a long problem like that. Good. After finishing up that old business, the new business for tonight will be tax amendment for adding utility requirements to the UDO.
Um, I need to post comment maybe till next month, or not? We don't have, we're not quite there on the draft, I guess, so, um, we can have that.
Well, you got us all excited.
Yes.
Just a little bit, no?
That was, that came from the last town, one thing, and it was something that one woman wanted us to look into, and so it was kind of.
Just a little bit.
It was, we weren't ready for it, so.
I'm excited about the idea that.
Okay, well, on part B, is the, we're gonna review the alternate planning board applications, and I, I guess you're gonna introduce those tonight?
Yeah, so, over the last couple months, we've been advertising for an alternate position, and that alternate position's been vacant since Andrew moved into, uh, permanent town seat, and so we've had, been advertising on the website, in the paper, been getting some applications, and I've got a couple. Um, first, and I'm just, these are ones we received, first, the last, most recent one I got was James Matthew Smith, and here's his resume and contacts down. And then, the other two, I've got them stapled together, they came in very close, one's a Van Stanley Felish, Felish, I might be pronouncing that wrong, and it was on West Rogers Street, um, and then, he's the first page, and then the next two pages is Matthew Holland, who is on that one, at Girvin Terrace, and all these are in town. It's hard to see them.
You have one alternate for the town, like, in town.
Yeah, we have one alternate for the in-town seat that can sit in for Tom, Peter, Andrew, the ditch, if anyone uses it vacant, they can sit in for them.
So these three are all in town?
They're all in town, but I don't have anything.
That's Coolish.
Coolish?
Coolish, that's how you say that.
Um, don't have any for E T J, so.
Yeah, and they're advertising it in that sense, I don't know if anyone, most people do grasp what we're looking for, I don't know.
So, I'll leave that for yous.
Yeah, I wanted to take these and review.
Yeah, we'll have to do that.
We actually have that in the paper to expand on that.
They've been running the paper a couple times, and it's.
Well, they might read it in their article, but I live in those areas.
It's on the website.
So what's the process for picking the ones?
We just.
Make a motion?
You all make them, just look them, and make a motion, or, you know, for a recommendation, ultimately, the board still has to approve, but you can just make the recommendation.
But that means we gotta check, we gotta read this and find out what their background is.
You don't have to do nothing today, I mean, it's up to whatever you want.
Does anybody know this Coolish guy?
No.
No, he did.
He called me on the phone, and asked some questions, uh, I explained, you know, how it worked, and, you know, the old town board, or board adjustment, and planning board, you serve as both, and set in for the, the, the regular members, one of them is vacant, and, um, he, I think he works at, maybe Ambassador.
Ambassador. Yeah, that's what it says.
I think it's like, in there, and.
The first type?
Yeah.
Coolish?
Yeah, lived there just a couple years, and said he wanted to get more involved in, um, in that.
It's someone that, all three of them volunteered to be put up for this, so that's pretty impressive to start with.
Yeah.
I guess we could just review their resumes, and maybe.
Come back next time.
Come back next week, and we can have our head wrapped around it a little bit better. To choose one of these three at this point.
Yeah, going through, I see.
You have to choose one of these three, it depends on how we decide.
That's true.
I mean, I don't see any reason why not to choose somebody who lives, who takes the speed.
And, uh, historically, the alternates haven't been really used that much, have they?
Well, we've had a lot of alternates that have moved on to the board, so.
But they don't count.
And waiting to change through the law is an option.
It passed out, you know.
We had a lot of full-time members that just never showed up.
I think Todd was absent a lot, that's why I was coming along.
Yeah.
That's true.
Yeah, and then even when everybody was here, and we were doing something, I knew it was gonna take a couple months, I would ask Andrew to come, and I want him to be, I didn't want Andrew to show up, and not, you know, suddenly now, now we're gonna vote on something, and he'd come, and he'd be like, what have you been doing for the last three months?
No, you should always come.
I don't know, so he'd be.
That's true.
I did, I wanted to make sure, you never know.
So I like, I like you with that. They can always sit up here and ask questions, but when it comes to voting, it could, well.
Part of the process, so at our April meeting, we'll, we'll bring back our thoughts on this. And, uh, any other new business?
We'll make a motion with John.
Second. All of you.
Hi.
All right, thank you all.